Fifteen seconds, check your equipment. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. We're here for the last regular meeting for the council council in the month of August. I call the meeting to order and we will continue with our normal ritual, the pledge of allegiance, followed by the community. Please join with me in honoring our national symbol.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor.
My dear heavenly father, we thank you for your great grace and kindness to us as a community here in Emmett. We thank you for those who are serving the public interest. We pray, God, that you would bless them with your wisdom in the decisions to be made. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. These are not so much amendments as deletions. Under action item G, that has the approval of resolution R 2025-06, Jim Grant, delete that, you'll see it probably in a couple of weeks. Things move fast and some new language came in and so we'll do it then. And I've already talked to Mr. Thompson about this on the action item for the executive session thirteen. We will take care of that under blah, 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 item I, as in India. Since it's a quick appointment, I think everyone knows a message went out on why we're doing half of the old model, because half of the old model is all we have so far. But we will continue that with Mr. Thompson's good graces for one year, should you approve. Anyone else have any faith amendments? And that was just telling you I'm not going to call them, so we're not really amending per se. Any declarations of conflicts of interest on items that we will be voting on? You can see the action items. Hearing none, any declaration of council members discussing outside an open meeting on something we might be working or voting on tonight? All right. Moving on to the general good of the order, the elected officials, it is my pleasure once again, as we do every end of August, for the month of September, we declare library card signup month. And this is the declaration, or proclamation, I should say, for 2025. Whereas libraries are important for education, imagination, and opportunity in developing students of all ages, offering resources from early literacy programs to digital tools that support lifelong learning and personal growth. And whereas libraries provide welcoming spaces where individuals from all backgrounds can learn and connect to bridge cultural, ethnic, generational, economic divides, thus strengthening the social fabric of their communities by connecting individuals across cultures, generations, and experiences. And whereas libraries curate collections and design programs that reflect the populations they serve, ensuring their patrons have access to information, technology, and culture, providing access for all. And whereas libraries help individuals navigate life's challenges by providing trusted information, digital access, job search support, and connections to essential services. And whereas libraries contribute to thriving local economies by equipping job seekers, entrepreneurs, students, and creators with tools and training to succeed. Whereas during times of crisis, libraries and their staff play a vital role in supporting the communities, both in person and virtually, by remaining steadfast in supporting and strengthening their communities. Whereas the shared resources provided by libraries help households save money, conserve resources, and reduce waste by operating simple ways to make a positive impact through the simple power of shared public good. Whereas a library card opens doors to endless possibilities, from books and technology to lifelong learning and imagination. Now, therefore, be it resolved, I, Mayor Gordon W. Petrie, proclaim September as library card signup month in Emmett, Idaho. And I encourage everyone who doesn't already possess a library card to sign up for one soon, to plan a lifetime of learning and the endless possibilities that it offers. Given under my hand this twenty-sixth day of August, 2025, the city of Emmett, Idaho, it's signed by both myself and the clerk, and so I'll leave it up here for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Council members have any, anything to add for the overall good of the order?
Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to kind of address the other council members tonight about a couple of different things that came out of the last meeting that we had. I appreciate all the community members coming forward, and I think we all agree that there's some things in the world that we maybe change. So I did a bunch of research, and I'm not sure if this is, I guess the reason I'm bringing this up is because we don't have opportunity to sit down together and really discuss things. We come into our meetings, we hear for ten, fifteen minutes about maybe a project, and then we have to make a vote on it. So hopefully I get with our city attorney and discuss this later on, of how we can get together and talk and maybe brainstorm some things in the future. So I'm gonna bring something for tonight, and city attorney, please shut me down whenever you need to. So my thoughts of tonight, I talked to a lot of different people after the meeting, and a lot of comments were saying, we are voted in from our public, and we are here to support the public, our citizens, and we all know that. And I asked, I kind of always throw it back on people, well, why don't you attend the meetings? You know, they didn't do this, but you didn't give feedback. And about ninety percent of the time when I say that, the comeback are telling me now, why? I can't be heard, there's nothing that can be done. I listen to you guys, I hear what you're saying, but there's nothing that we can do to change the things. And I said, well, you can call the clerk and get on the agenda, and that's a little late for some of them like that. So I've done a bunch of research on citizen comment periods, open comment periods, and different types of periods that they have, a time set aside in the council meeting where a citizen could come in and address discussions. It's not to bash on a department head or an employee, it's designed to bring them forward and just have a voice. And the one I read is really interesting, because it does give time restraints, and it also says, if something's been beat up like over and over and over, I believe it'd be the mayor can say, it's been addressed, no more concerns, we're going to move forward, like basically excuse it, you can excuse that person like that. And I know the complaint that we'll probably hear from everybody is, well, yeah, that's just going to be the bellakers that come, but that's still a citizen of our community, and I think we need to hear, and if it is a repetitive thing, maybe shut that down. So just food for thought, I would like to present something that we maybe talk.
I'll tell you why we don't do that. Have you ever been to a city council meeting that does that?
I have not.
Yeah. My hometown does that. It is not productive. If they have something that they really want, that's why we encourage, if you have something that you want to address the council on, because this is a council meeting.
Right.
It's not a public hearing.
Right.
So if you have something that you want to address the council on, easy, get on the agenda.
So I agree with a lot of that, but a lot of it I don't, because let's say some kind of agenda, they go, oh, man, tomorrow night is the meeting, like the one we had last Tuesday, that was a fast meeting that we got, it was a special meeting. I'm not sure if you've heard of this, but there's a bill that was introduced from Republican Chris Bruce, trying to get a push where all committees, including at city council meetings, county commissioner meetings, and all boards, commissions, have to provide that. They're putting it forward, last year it didn't pass, this year it may, if it does, then we'll be required to do that.
Sure.
So it's not just me saying this, it's our committee saying this, it sounds like the other legislators are saying the same thing, too. Chris Trakel, he did it last year.
That's up north, that's, that's up in the Kootenay area.
Anyway, he provided, but it didn't pass last year.
Right.
So I think us as a council need to decide if that's something we want to do, if we want to allow a citizen come forward. And again, some say three minutes, some say five minutes, but it gives an option. And if it is the person that comes in repeatedly every two weeks that come in and want to complain about the flowers in the park, or they want to complain about certain things, maybe we can listen to them for a short time. Like the mayor said, this is our council meeting, it's for us to get, gather facts. I've also read through the open meeting laws for the state of Idaho that we just put in from July of 2025, and it does talk about citizens can come forward to us, they can talk to us individually, but what we do is like when we disclose, we disclosed in the beginning, I talked to Bob Smith, Bob Smith told me the following facts, like that, too. So we have that resource. I just don't know if the public can be more apt to come to us individually, or the public can be more apt to come to a meeting and say, I'd like to take a few minutes of your time and explain the facts that I have.
Probably the biggest mistake most people make is they think this is a democracy, and you're not following my will, you're not doing what I'm asking you to do, it's because there wasn't a vote.
Right.
That, that's why you've hired us to make the best decision, because very often what people want done, can't, you can't.
I agree with you. Democracy is what we need, and I think that's why we have six of us up here, it's not a dictatorship, so not one person, not one of us people up here can make a decision to make a change in the city without the other people involved in it, nobody can. Staff, the same thing, we all work together as a democracy to make sure we do the best for the committee. I guess I'm feeling just a little bit overwhelmed, because we're making these big decisions sometimes without a lot of knowledge. We talk to staff once in a while, I know we get a lot of feedback, but the most we're getting is here at the meetings, and I just, you know, I just felt this as an option for, I guess, the community to go forward, supposed to have transparency in our, in our government.
I think we do.
I believe we do, but some people believe we do not. Some people believe this is a dictatorship, and some people believe a lot of things about us. I'm just saying, council, if that's something you'd like me to look into, I can provide some information more to the mayor and the clerk, and see if that's what we want to look into the future.
Well, anyone who says a dictator, I suspect that whether the mayor is running, no, I'm not, I don't have one vote unless there's a tie. The people are woefully ignorant on how government works, woefully.
Majority of the people understand what we're doing, but there are those few that may be, I mean, I talked to them, very intelligent people this last week, and that's what they told me, why would I go to a meeting when I have no say? I mean, that's, that's the worst, and this is the people that, you know, I guess people would claim as unintelligent or something like that, too. These are very smart people, they're, they just don't know the process. When they come to the meeting, they expect to maybe be heard or be able to talk, and they can't, and they're frustrated. So I'm sharing that information with you as council. I think it's an option to look into, it's just my little thoughts. If you guys want me to look into it more, I can look at it more, give it some to the city clerk and the, and our mayor, and go from there.
No, there's maybe one-third, maybe, one-third of the cities in the state of Idaho have a, it's usually a half hour, it's a pre, it's, it's before the business starts, you know? And I, when my, when my grandson was sworn in as, as paramedic up in Lewiston, I went to the, to the city council meeting. It was embarrassing. It was embarrassing.
I'm not saying it's the most positive thing, it's going to always get good response of it, but I, I believe, you have your belief, I have my belief, it's something the city can look at and maybe entertain. Have we tried something like this, and it turned into a bad deal? I mean, if you're removed, I don't know, maybe you do, has the city ever had that? I don't remember it ever being an open forum.
No, not, not to my knowledge.
Okay, all right. So that's my food for thought to the council. Is it something I think, if our community thinks that's something, an option for a fifteen-minute time period, I don't know how, I mean, you can't make it all, all night long, but if you did, give them a fifteen-minute period, and they each get three minutes to talk, three minutes of their time is, I think, worth our time, too, and stuff, just my belief. So that's what I have for the council.
Mayor?
Yeah.
That sounds great, but there, when we have public hearings on things, they might even be controversial, and they've been publicized, we still don't have people show up. And, and so, I mean, even when we have put it out there that we want them to tell us how they want to see Johns remodeled, and do you want this, do you want this? And we had, what, twenty-five people that actually put in? I don't even think it was that many. It might have been.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I. It was under twenty-five.
Yeah, I think it was like twenty-two, twenty-two people, and that was for the whole county.
And my thoughts on that is, maybe they don't want to come, they don't believe or listen to them. If we have an open forum at every meeting, they know that they can come to different meetings and talk. This is the best thing in the world, just my thoughts, sharing with the council, this is what we do. And then I guess we'll move forward however you want to do that.
Mayor?
Yeah.
When we had the one-way streets proposed to do permanently, we had, I don't know what we, you know, we had people come up and speak and get, how was that different from what?
I think we had a public hearing.
A public hearing, yeah?
Yeah.
Yes.
Therein lies the difference.
Yeah.
And it was a specific topic.
What I've found is the focus of this is not because of the specific topic, hey, we're going to close down the roads, we're going to do these different things, that's public hearings. This is just the general run-of-the-mill that, I don't even know what the complaint would be. Stop signs are all getting faded, we need to change stop signs, or something like that, maybe they don't know where to go, they maybe don't know where to go to public work, they don't want to go to the police department, whatever it may be. I think, I'm sure there'll be a lot of complaints and concerns about things that have already been talked about, but once that, and also maybe gives a feedback of how many people are involved in those discussions about maybe noise complaints or traffic complaints like that, so, too. Again, just passing on the permission from the citizens, I did the research, sadly there are citizens, are communities that do that, not say we have to do it because they do, but there are some doing out there, and they have it taken off their agenda, so there must be some productive procedure involved in that, I would think.
Can I make a couple of comments?
Yeah.
So just a couple of initial thoughts. In your, as you continue your research, I would suggest you attend a city's council meeting where they have that type of venue. I know Moridian does it, so that might be a close place that you could go and attend. The other thing that you touched on is making decisions. One thing that I've talked with staff about quite a bit, and I think I've mentioned it to the council before, when you have agenda items that are on here as an action item, the staff really tries hard for those bigger decisions to lay the foundation with the council weeks in advance. So oftentimes you'll see on their reports, they're working on this, and it's going to be coming in front of the council, because exactly what we don't want is for this big decision to be in front of you, and you're like, oh, I've never heard of this before, and so, you know, you're, you feel like you're forced to make a decision. None of, none of the staff wants you to feel like you have to make the decision that night, and, and as a, as a body, you have the ability to table or continue that decision-making to another meeting if you feel like you need more information from staff. But that's always been our practice, is to lay the foundation well in advance, so that by the time the decision is actually before you, hopefully you've already got all the new information, or at least just have it prepped to make that decision.
And I believe you're right on that, a lot of times when you know that the department head's paper talks about what they're looking to, but there's no facts about that. Tonight, we have some information that we'll be talking with some of the different staff about things, too. I'm just trying to gather much information, cancel, make an educated decision on things, our time is to answer, ask the questions. Hopefully we have all the right questions we have, need to ask to make a definitive decision, too, but, yeah.
Mayor, one last question?
Yeah.
Jody?
Yes.
In the school board meetings?
Yes.
They have a open?
Yes, I was going to.
How's that work out?
I was going to say, Mayor, we had a section on public patron input where people would sign in, when they would sign in on the agenda, they would also sign in to, to speak, and then it depends on what the topics are and what's going on, on these different situations. We ended up having a timer, so that it just doesn't carry on, because it could, depending on what, Ken, what the topic is, it could carry on for a lot of time. So we had the timer, and then they would hold up cards so that they could visibly see. And then we would only limit to, you know, well, I think the, the most at that time, we had a meeting up in Ola where it was ten, ten people, so that doesn't carry on for two or three hours, because it, it was good in some things, some things, yeah, and it also depends, again, what the topic is, you can easily have, I, I knew one topic was going to be confrontational, so I ended up having a police officer come, just in case something got out of hand. Luckily, that didn't happen, but I, I would like to hear more from, from the public at times. I explained the other day to a lady that anything that we have action on, that's what we're going to vote on. And then she kind of calmed down, because, like the other night, it was just an informational item, a workshop, because we're still gathering the information, and once it says action, and then we might not even take an action on it, we might just have to gather more information. But yes, in the school system, we do have, we did have public patron input, it was a set time, and a certain amount of people could sign up. Another thing that, up in Ola, because the consensus is there, they're all for the school, you could have one person represent the group of favorability of what they're trying to, which side they're on, so that could knock out a lot of time. So again, it just depends on what the topic is, what the situation may be. I think educating the public is, is very crucial, and if they don't come to our meetings, then it's kind of frustrating, but maybe a more explanation may be on our website, I'd love to know about it. Just a thought.
All right. Anything else? Then I'm calling for the public hearing on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2025. Treasure.
Well, we made it. We're at the last phase. Public hearing is open for comment. Is there any questions on the budget currently? We currently have appropriations for our next year budget for eleven million, four seventy-seven, nine eighty-one. Are there any particular questions for me that the council has?
Mayor?
Yes.
So, I just noticed that the amount was a little lower than normally during our workshop, is that because the amount that come in on?
No, that, it was, it should be exactly the same.
The other one I had was eleven thousand, five twenty-one, sixty-four.
Well, this is the final, what was the date, look at the date on the top of that printout.
Seven sixteen of twenty-five.
Seven sixteen. I think we had something after that, though. I think that was before I had the finals from the county. And I had estimated a little higher than.
Seven twenty-two.
Than I should have on the first round. Anything else? Nothing has changed on it since we met the last time, so.
No other questions? As is our practice with public hearings, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment or ask questions about the budget? Is there anyone from the public that would like to ask questions or comment on the budget for the new fiscal year? Is there anyone from the public? You folks out there that would like to comment or ask questions about the new budget, closed budget? Hearing none? The meeting is now closed. We will go to the decision on the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion. Do either approve or disapprove of the budget, hopefully approve it.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Let me make a motion that we approve the provided budget, proposed budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026?
Second.
And there used to be also a publication. There's a ordinance later on in the agenda. Okay, then we'll do it then. All right. The main motion has been made by Counselor Nebiker to approve the 2025-26 budget for the new fiscal year. The second was made by President Henderson, we'll have an ordinance later on. Is there any further debate on the issue? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve the 2025-26 budget, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Any abstentions? Hearing none. The ayes have it, passes unanimously. The consent agenda, item nine, before we go on to the presentation, and I see that Mr. Walker is here, has to do with the approval of the minutes and the approval of the counts payable. Previous minutes. Oh, no minutes to approve. But we have to approve the counts payable.
Please.
Mayor?
Yeah.
I'm glad to make a motion that we accept the consent agenda. Consent agenda, let's present.
Second.
I just want to get that approved, okay.
Second.
Main motion to accept the consent agenda, approving the accounts payable, was made by Council Ruzinkin, second by Henderson. Is there any further debate? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. All right, Main Street Bridge Replacement, Mr. Walker.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
And members of the city councils, good to be with you tonight. I know I don't show up a lot, but I'm in Emmett most every week, a couple times a week, working with your staff, which are fantastic, by the way, I guess you already know that, though. So I'm, I'm happy to be here tonight to provide an update to both you and, and the folks here in attendance, and maybe attending virtually about the Emmett Main Street Bridge Project Replacement, or Replacement Project, rather. So I do have a little presentation here, let's see if I can, yep, okay. So I'm going to jump into this, the main project improvements include the fact that it is a total bridge, let me back up, probably should have showed you a picture of where this is, but this is just East Main Street, you all know it probably, Farmers Coop Canal Crossing. So key project elements will be, it is a full bridge replacement. We're also intending to improve the roadway alignment a little bit, looking to update and improve or create safer pedestrian mobility. We're going to work to improve the hydraulics through the bridge, there's a bit of scour and erosion on the downstream side, on the west side of that bridge, there'll be a picture later that kind of illustrates that, so we're going to work to address that with a little longer bridge, create a couple, two travel lanes, accommodates truck, traffic, and improve, again, the pedestrian facilities with, with sidewalks. Another couple of things that I wanted to mention that aren't in this slide, we are, you have both a sewer line and a water line underneath this current bridge. They actually are not quite deep enough to be outside the foundations and the, and the footings of the new bridge structure, so we'll have a little blockout for those, those existing utilities. And we also intend on constructing some spare conduits, across the bridge, through the, under, under the bridge, so that if you want to extend fiber or, you know, other things that come up over the next seventy years, there's some conduit, spare conduit there to accommodate that. Let's see here, here's, here's a picture of the bridge footprint, and, well, the project footprint, just a quick, you can see the, the legend here on the right side as far as what the colors represent. But kind of the gray color illustrates new asphalt and. And the pink, there's a couple of different pinks there, but the pink colors represent concrete, which is going to be, or the bridge structure, superstructure. You might remember this, maybe you don't, but I think a few months ago, Steve brought forward the concept of, two different concepts for the bridge. One was wider, that matches the current bridge width. And then one was a narrower bridge footprint that would still meet the traffic and pedestrian requirements, but be of reduced cost and then also ultimately a long-term cost savings in just maintenance. And so you selected that narrow, narrower footprint bridge, and so that's what's reflected here. Feel free to stop me, by the way, anytime along this little discussion. So that's the project footprint. You can see it's pretty compact. The location of the bridge makes it a little unique, though, because you've got essentially two side streets, Lincoln and Boise Avenue, that are literally up against the bridge structure. And so because of the proximity, they just inherently are kind of part of this project footprint, at least a little bit of them. Some other things that make it a little unique, you've got existing businesses that are right up against the canal on both the west and the east side. On the southeast side, you've got a barber shop that is about 10 feet from the bridge structure. And so we'll be working through the design process to work around that. That narrow footprint really helped on that particular property specifically. Here's a cross-section of the bridge. And I won't get too far into the details of kind of the technical elements of the design, but I think a couple of things are important to note here. You do, you will have pedestrian facilities on both sides of the bridge, one side wider than the other. You will also, the bridge construction will be voided concrete slabs. And there's a lot of benefit to that. You can have a shorter member, girder. And that keeps, in this case, it's very important because then you can keep your roadway profile about the same, so you don't have this big hump through the bridge, which I know the teenagers would love it, but probably most of us wouldn't. And so that's important here. It also reduces the weight of the bridge. When we talk about a voided slab, it actually has hollow sections in the slabs themselves, and so it makes them lighter, but still strong. They're going to be prestressed, which means that they're put in tension when they cure. And so they have kind of a curvature on them in normal, without it load on them. And so then when you put a weight on them as vehicles drive across it, it puts that bridge slab into compression, which concrete loves compression, right? It's really strong with compression. It's not very strong in tension. And so it's an ideal circumstance for this particular situation, these voided slab. Yeah, the voided slab bridge. And these will sit on abutments and foundations on both sides. So that's kind of the general configuration of the bridge. We've mentioned a couple of the key project goals. One is to reduce the bridge maintenance costs, and some of the decisions you've already made will really, I think, do that. We've talked about safe and efficient transportation, minimize the impact to the adjacent property owners. Again, some of your decisions will really facilitate that. I mentioned some of the embankment erosion. You can kind of see it right here on the downstream side, on the west side of the bridge here. So that will be corrected with a little longer bridge structure. And then improved pedestrian. One other thing is, the intention is to continue where possible within the footprint of the project, but continue the kind of lighting and the colored stamped concrete ribbon that's along Main Street. So our intention is to continue that at least. We don't have a long section of the project corridor, but where we are, we'll be trying to do that as well. So you continue that theme that you have, which is really sharp looking. Quick summary about the project funding. The project was, the City of Emmett applied for funding through the state transportation. Well, actually, this was through the little, call it Little B, Leading Idaho Bridge Program. You applied for funding and were successful in doing so, or in receiving that. And the project then is being administered through the local Highway Technical Advisory Council, which is an arm kind of under ITD that helps locals administer federal and state-funded projects. And I said 90%. That's not right. I was just remembering, it's the Little B. It's actually a pure 100% funding through the Little B program. So it's just a great program and a great project for the city. So let's see. A quick note about detours. The intention is to close Main Street down during the construction of the bridge. It will reduce the cost of the bridge, and it will also facilitate a more rapid construction so that the contractor can just get in and get the work done rather than trying to accommodate pedestrian vehicle traffic on half the lane, trying to build a structure like that. So the intention is to close the road. You have pretty close detours, as you know, better than anybody, as you live here and drive here. But you have a couple of close detour routes. It's contemplated the construction will begin in the winter-spring of 2027 and likely last for about six to eight months. So any questions about this? Okay. Oh, sure.
I just got one question about the bridge. You're saying that it's going to be really shallow with cement. How's that going to handle 80,000-pound trucks that cost them to be beating on it?
So I shouldn't have suggested it's really thin. The voided slab members are like four feet by 15 inches thick.
Okay.
So, yeah. When I think of smaller section, I'm comparing it to like three-foot steel girders that you see in some of these other structures. So that's the beauty of the voided slab, is it can be a little thinner, but it's still 15 inches thick, right? So, yeah, good question. They will be designed to accommodate the traffic loads for this section, which does get a lot of truck traffic. Couple of other things to just, you can see some contact information. This, again, is intended not just for, you know all of us, but it's also for the public and this little handout. But a couple of things to note. So what has been accomplished to date? As of today, all the surveying, essentially all the surveying's done. The geotechnical investigation, which is what I would call soil mechanics and the drilling and things like that, that's done. We've made a pretty good push on the environmental process that we have what's called an approved type, size, and location report for the structure itself. We have an approved concept report, and we have an approved hydraulics report. And so I would say we're in the 40% design spot. What's next, what's our next steps? Next steps will be a preliminary design, which is contemplated to be done by first week of January 2026. Let me remind you, this is a federal aid state project, so these are like three to five years. It's just kind of how they get programmed. And so preliminary design, which sounds, that's kind of a funny word. We would think preliminary design is like right at the beginning, but preliminary design in ITD world and in LTAC word is actually closer to 50% design. That's, like I say, January 2026. Not too much later, there's a step called Design Study Report. That's kind of the key step before you can go and do right-of-way acquisition and things like that. Then final designs in August of 2026 in what we call Plan, Specifications, and Estimate, or PSNE, kind of the term. That's scheduled to be delivered in October of 2026 with construction sometime in the spring, winter of 2027, 26, 27. And so project's moving ahead of schedule, actually, and is actually going along really quite nicely. So that's a quick update on the Main Street Bridge project and happy to be a part of the project. We appreciate the opportunity to do that.
Mayor?
Yes.
When was the bridge that's there now, when was it built?
Oh, good question. I'm scratching the archives in my memory when I read the report, but I'm pretty sure it was in 19, I think it was in the early 1900s. I think it was 1911, but I, just going off memory.
We got some pretty good use of it.
You have, actually, admittedly.
Is that for the archives that you get, hey, this?
If we can get 100 years out of the next bridge.
Maybe we should just design the same one.
Maybe. Yeah, hopefully a little bit of improvements. But I tell you, they built things, I'm not sure we build them quite the way they used to build them, admittedly, in spite of all of our technology. It is pretty impressive. Thanks for the question.
Sure.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Again, big shout out to your staff. They are fantastic to work with and serve your community really well, so. Thanks for letting me be here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fun to see you all.
All right. The next matter is under item 11, which is the business portion. Item A is approve ordinance 2025-03, an ordinance of the City of Emmett, Idaho, amending Title III, Chapter 1, Section 16, hours of sale by allowing the sale of liquor on Memorial Day, Thanksgiving Day, and Sunday by adopting the state laws for the sale of liquor, wine, and beer on election days and providing an effective date. Chief Conker.
Counselor and Mayor, as some of you may remember, one of the owners of the bars here in town, Jefferson Jenkins, had come to council not too long ago, and he, these are one of the things that he brought up at that time. And what he was pointing out is that he wanted it to be consistent with the state law. So that's what Jake has worked his magic with the ordinance, and that's how it is right now.
Any questions?
Mayor. I'm just looking at the C statute. It talks about, like, the state has it from 1:00 to 10:00, 1:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., but the counties and cities can make it further than that. Is that correct, or am I mistaken?
That's correct.
So we've always had the 2:00 to 10:00 clock. So we're just not really following the statute. We're amending our ordinance to apply with our allowance.
Yes, that's correct.
I can find anything on election. I don't believe, that's not a law that you cannot drink on election day, is it?
Correct, it's not a law, correct.
We're just, well, it was the state law.
It was.
The state law was amended. Right.
Right.
Currently, currently, there's no law that says you cannot.
That's what we're referring to. What he was referring to was that amendment with the state law. We did not, yes.
And part of the reason, I think, is we don't have an election day anymore. We have an election month.
Yeah, I don't know why that was amended that way with the state law.
All right. Any other questions? Chair will entertain a motion with regard to approving the ordinance. And the chair will also entertain the motion with regard to the exception of moving to dispense with the rule and that the ordinance be read once by title.
Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-03. I also move to dispense with the rule requiring ordinances to be read on three separate days and once in full, and that the ordinance be read once by title.
Second. All right, thank you. The main motion has been made by Counselor Denham to approve ordinance 2025-03, which is set forth in the agenda, the full title. And she also moves that the rule requiring ordinance be read on three separate days and once in full, that it be read only once by title. The second was made by Counselor Butler. Any further discussion? Hearing none. President Henderson, how do you vote?
Yay.
Yay. Counselor Butler? Yay. Counselor Denham?
Yay.
Yay. Counselor Harris?
Yay.
Yay. Counselor Nebiker?
Yank.
Counselor Ruzinkin?
Yay.
Yay. Six yays, no nays. Motion passes. Chair will now, Chair will now accept a motion to accept the first and, well, wait, you have to read it first. So please read it, and then I'll accept it.
Thank you. An ordinance of the City of Emmett, Idaho, amending Title III, Chapter 1, Section 16, Hours of Sale by allowing the sale of liquor on Memorial Day, Thanksgiving Day, and Sunday by adopting the state laws for the sale of liquor, wine, and beer on election days and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Chair will accept a motion to accept the first and only reading of ordinance 2025-03, directing the mayor to sign and directing that it be published by summary.
Mayor?
Yes.
I move to accept the first and only reading of ordinance O-2025-03, direct the mayor to sign and direct that it be published by summary.
Second. All right, thank you. Counselor Denham has moved to accept the first and only reading of ordinance O-2025-03 and directing the mayor to sign and directing that it be published by summary. Any further debate?
Excuse me, who has the second? Tom or Joe?
Tom.
Counsel Butler.
Thank you.
President Henderson?
Yay.
Yay. Counsel Butler? Yay. Counselor Denham?
Yay.
Counselor Harris?
Yay.
Counselor Nebiker?
Yay.
Counselor Ruzinkin?
Yay.
Six yays, no nays. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next matter is approval of Resolution R-2025-03, Employee Training and Reimbursement Policy.
This resolution has come forward to you before. We have made some adjustments to it. We also updated Exhibit A. But as it kind of got brought up in the last meeting, that is a document that can be adjusted. That's just pretty much an example for the police department. This actually can be used not just by the police department. It can be used by other city departments also. It's not just for me, but it is a document that I do use. Also, this is something that does not need to be approved every time. This is that one time that it will be approved by the council. So each time I use it for a new hire, you will not be seeing it.
All right. Any questions?
Mayor?
Yes.
Just another one. On Exhibit A, in the last paragraph, the City may at its sole discretion alter, amend the policy or provisions thereof at any time without prior notice or to the consent of employees. Moreover, the mayor shall have authority exempt by written agreement any employee from the payback requirements of this policy. I'm just concerned about that, I guess, a little bit. I don't know at what point the mayor would exempt somebody from that policy that we're putting in place. I just don't know if that's, puts that all into one person to make that control whether somebody's going to be paying back or not paying back, because he can exempt one person or another person. I don't know if that's, I guess, maybe a pressure, somebody would want to put on just the mayor himself to make that decision or not, or if there's a criteria, I like you, I don't like you. I mean, that could be an argument. I don't know, maybe the attorney could say that would open a possible litigation if you're saying, well, the mayor didn't like me, so he did it because Bob didn't have to, and I do, or something like that. So I don't know if that's something that ought to be looked into more or not.
Mayor, so I think that would be the exception to the rule and an oddball circumstance. And, you know, it's hard, it's always hard to come up with theoreticals. We just don't know that situation until it comes up. So with the council approving this type of policy, it's entrusting the mayor to make that type of decision in those unusual types of situations. Generally, my advice is if we're going to stray from policy that the council has set, if we have time, to come back to council and say, we need an acceptance of the policy. I know this is the same type of policy that we had in place before. But, yeah, again, I would be hard-pressed to come up with theoreticals on something like this. I know in the past, it's always been, well, we've never had anything like that. It's always been.
No. The person who gets this The person who gets this, and if they do leave before the three years, then they have the ability to explain why they feel like they don't need to pay it, or what their problems are with it, and that comes back to me and the clerk, is what we've done in the past.
So, reading through all this, I think it's very well-written. It gives the very clear language. It says, not a contract for an employee. It's very thorough on the one through three years, what you must do, and it's very thorough on what will be accepted to be not paid back and what will be. So it's very solid, very firm of what is allowed and not allowed. That just sentence kind of threw me off because I don't know what exception it may be, but at least that very well may not ever happen. I'm just wondering if that may be a better option, have that come back to city council to address their concerns if it's going to be exempt, like a rebuttal to a policy or to a resolution. I don't know, I'm just asking that. Because I just know, I believe, if one person makes a decision and somebody gets, where they don't have to pay it and one person has to pay it, there's always going to be a lot of decision-making on there and on behalf of what to do for litigation.
So one option that the council can do is adopt this resolution, but under, under the condition that that last sentence be stricken.
Which is my recommendation.
You agree with that, Chief?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Last sentence is stricken?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, on Exhibit A. The last two sentences. It begins with the city may and ends with requirements of this policy.
Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution Number R 2025-03, and also to remove the last two sentences of Exhibit A, starting with the city may and ending with requirements of this policy.
Second.
Thank you. Main motion has been made by Counselor Nebiker to approve Resolution R 2025-03, the Employee Training and Reimbursement Policy, accepting that it is with the removal of the city may, last two sentences of Exhibit A, and ending with requirements of this policy, that they be stricken, and the second was made by President Henderson.
It's just that last sentence, Mayor.
I've got two.
Now, the city may at its sole discretion alter, amend this policy or provisions thereof at any time without prior notice to or consent of the by the employees.
Period.
Which is fine. I think you, I think the discussion was to strike that last sentence afterwards. Moreover, the mayor shall have the authority to exempt.
Well, I, I said the last two sentences.
Right.
I'd like to amend that to just the last sentence.
Okay.
Second.
All right, thank you. So the, the motion correctly stated, restated, is that the last sentence on Exhibit A be stricken, that's moreover, the mayor shall have the authority, so on and so forth. It's the last sentence. And the correct second is to the last sentence on Exhibit A, having been made by President Henderson. Is there any further debate? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Any abstentions? No abstentions, no nays, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
And we go on to item C, approval of the Resolution R 2025-05 Motorcycle Program Policies.
Sergeant Leatherman, could you come forward, please? My left hand, man. I'm left-handed, so I have left hand, man. No, that's my left.
Or your other right.
As you know, this, we got this opportunity in January. We were contacted by another agency who had two motorcycles that were available, and they were suited for police work. I contacted Mr. Leatherman at that time, Sergeant Leatherman, and he was pretty excited because it was something that him and I were looking at to be an opportunity for many, many years, ever since he got here. He worked for the California Highway Patrol and had the opportunity to be a part of a motorcycle group, no, program, motorcycle program, then.
Motorcycle club, the Hell Angels?
Yeah, yeah. It was a cult. It was a cult. And so, at that time, we were able to obtain those. Since then, we have used them in parades and also in funeral escorts, and the community has reacted very positively towards them and has liked us using, using the motorcycle for that. As I stated, when we first got them, we wanted to move forward and have them part of our patrol team, and this policy helps with that. I did contact Lexi Pol. They are our policy program or department that creates our policies for us. They, surprisingly enough, didn't have one, which really shocked me. What they did have is other departments have submitted their policies for them, and they have approved those policies. So I got two of those policies, along with the policy that he was familiar with in California. He put all those together, him and I worked together to create this one, and we submitted it to Jake. Jake looked at it, and that's what we'd like to have approved today.
Mayor? Yes.
Just a couple of questions for you. So on the section 5A1, it says that officers and sergeants assigned to motorcycle duty must continually improve riding skills, blah, blah. So I'm curious why it says officers and sergeants. Is a chief not allowed to ride a motorcycle or a lieutenant? I mean, I don't know if that's.
Well, I always say that I'm an officer through and through all the time, so.
It seemed like that a sergeant, too.
It did, and you know what? I thought we were going to take that sergeant out of there, and I guess we missed that because we actually had a sergeant section earlier on, and I removed that, and that word should be removed from there. It should just say officers.
And on three, it also has that, too, I believe.
On three?
Some other. Yeah, on three, they also have just two.
I thought we caught all of those, but we did not. So those should be taken out of there.
And then one other question on same section, line two. Has a minimum of four hours per month of self-guided practice riding. Is that on duty or is that out of duty?
The training would be paid for, so either we would flex his hours and pay and send him with his normal 40, 80 hours that he has in that 14-day, or we would all, or we'd pay overtime if we had that available for him. So it could be either or.
And then there's one other thing about the differential pay when performing the duties. So is that a, is that kind of a revert?
And we kept that in there. Right now, we're not doing that, but that's something that we kept. All the other policies had it, so we just kept it instead of removing it and then later on, bring it in. So, but right now, we're not.
A lot of the values of this is for the traffic control grants and all like that. So we'd be like, you'd like that.
Absolutely.
And just, and it does talk about chapter two, number two, about the helmets, issuing the helmets. So each individual officer that is assigned or approved to ride the motorcycle will have their own helmet, is that correct?
Yes.
Now, did you got helmets with the motorcycle when you first bought it, or did you not?
We did not.
So you had purchase those, okay.
Yeah, we got that purchase through a grant, actually, the motorcycle, or the helmet.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions? Chair will entertain a motion regarding approval of Exhibit A, the Department Motorcycle Program Policy, understanding that on the third page, 5A1 will strike after officers and sergeants, and 5A3 will strike, the department will maintain a list of all officers striking and sergeants. So just read officers.
Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve Resolution R 2025-05, a Motorcycle Program Policy, with the exception... Do I need to say what you just said, all of it, or is it?
Well, are you, is the motion what I said?
Yes, it is. It is what the mayor said, removing the sergeant from the two areas.
All right.
Second.
Thank you. Main motion has been made to approve Resolution R 2025-05, the Motorcycle Program Policy, with the exception that on the third page, 5A1 will read officers assigned to motorcycle duties, striking and sergeants, and 5A3 will read, the department will maintain a list of all officers striking and sergeants in the department. And the second was made by President Henderson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? No nays, are there any abstentions? No abstentions, motion passes unanimously.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor? I have a token.
Yeah? What's this?
So, ISB, along with all the motors in the valley, came up with a coin. So we made them. It has all the initials of everyone in the Treasure Valley and Twin Falls of all the sheriffs and police departments, and then on the backside, it also has a little slogan.
We will display this proudly in the clerks.
If you want to read the back part of the coin.
Oh, sure. I will. If I can get it open.
So on the coin, it has the motorcycle wheel with wings on it?
Yes.
Then it has all the initials of the Treasure Valley motor units. In the backside, we have our own little slogan for motor units.
Let's see. You're calling that the backside?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It says, "Motors, even cops need a hero."
Very good.
Treasure Valley Police. And it's, it's very well done. That's, that's a nice challenge, coin.
Let's pass it around so we can look at that.
All right, thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Treasure, the next issue is approving ordinance, I presume that's O 2025-04, an ordinance titled, "The Annual Appropriation Ordinance for the Fiscal Year Beginning October 1, 2025, Appropriating the Sum of $11,477, $11,477."
We might be in trouble. Everybody's fired. There's no jobs.
We're going very lean, very lean. $981 to defray the expenses and liabilities, ooh, I hate that, of the city of Emmett, Idaho.
And what was the dollar amount again?
$11,000.
I think it was half that when I started.
So I'm just asking approval tonight for our ordinance so we can go ahead and implement our appropriations come October 1st.
Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve ordinance O 2025-04, also move to dispense with the rules requiring the ordinance be read on three separate dates and once in full, and the ordinance be read once by title.
Second.
All right, the motion that's been made, main motion, has been made by Counselor Nebiker to approve ordinance O 2025-04, an ordinance titled, "The Annual Appropriation," so on and so forth, is already stated with this, and that we dispense with the rule requiring the ordinance to be read on three separate days and once in full, and that the ordinance be read once by title. It's the publishing that's going to have to be in full.
Correct.
And the second was made by Counselor Henderson. Is there any further discussion with regard to the motion? Hearing none. President Henderson?
Yay.
Yay. President Butler? Yay. President Denham?
Yay.
President Denham.
Yes.
We're all presidents. Let's see, what time is it?
Been a long day for Gordo. Counselor Harris?
Yay.
Counselor Nebiker?
Yank.
And Counselor Rezinkin?
Yay.
Six yays, no nays, motion passes. You may read it if you want.
And ordinance number O 2025-04, an ordinance titled, "The Annual Appropriation Ordinance for the Fiscal Year Beginning October 1, 2025, Appropriating the Sum of $11,477,981 to Defray the Expenses and Liabilities of the City of Emmett, Idaho for Said Fiscal Year, Authorizing a Levy of a Sufficient Tax Upon the Taxable Property and Specifying the Objects and Purposes for Which Said Appropriation Is Made."
Wow. Well said.
Let's see, this is year 10?
The chair will now accept a motion to accept the first and only reading of ordinance O 2025-04, directing the mayor to sign and directing that it be published in full.
Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve ordinance O 2025-04, and to accept, and accept to move the person only reading of ordinance O 2025-04, direct the mayor to sign, and direct that it be published in full.
All right.
Second.
Thank you. Main motion to accept the first and only reading of ordinance O 2025-04 was made by Counselor Denham, directing the mayor to sign and directing it to be published in full, and the second was made by Counselor Butler. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. President Henderson?
Yay.
Yay. Counselor Butler? Counselor Denham?
Yay.
Counselor Harris?
Yay.
Counselor Nebiker?
Yank.
Counselor Rezinkin?
Yay.
Six yays, no nays, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, item E is to approve the local government investment pool funds application.
Yes, I need to open two more LGIP accounts. The reason for this, when we had our meeting, our first meeting with our, with our committee, I discovered that the interest accrual on these accounts needs to also be separated individually in the accounts. So I tried to do that manually, and it's just going to get to be too confusing. So I'd like to open two separate accounts, one for each one of our funds, and that way the interest accrual will be appropriate on each fund that way. So that is the reason for it.
Any questions? Chair will entertain a motion. Yes.
I'm going to approve opening two new accounts with the local government investment pool for impact fees and authorize the mayor to sign the additional funds application.
All right.
Second.
Thank you. Main motion was made to approve the opening of two new accounts with the local government investment pool for impact fees, authorizing the mayor to sign the additional funds application. Second was made by Counselor Harris. Any further discussion or debate? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Item F, approval request for a surety bond from Connor Construction.
Mayor, counsel, so tonight, we have a surety bond request for Connor Construction, and the request is for bonding the landscaping improvements alongside Johns and the two streetlights that are required along South Johns. So code requires 150% of the bond, and so the total amount will be $82,242.
Mayor?
Yes.
And you're recommending this, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Staff is recommending.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the security bond for Connor Construction in the amount of $82,242 for the, yeah, the right-of-way landscaping and streetlight along Johns Avenue.
Second. Thank you. The... The motion was made to approve by Counselor Nebiker, the request for surety bond from Connor Construction in the amount of $82,242 to allow the city to sign the Mylar for the final plat. And the second was made by Counselor Resinkin. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
G does not exist. We have the motion to approve the pay request, number one, to, do they say Reener or Reiner?
Reener.
They say Reener.
Yes.
Pump systems, in the amount of $47,215.05 for the 12th Street Lift Station Upgrades Pre-Purchase Project.
Mayor, Counsel, so I'm bringing the first pay request that we have for the 12th Street Upgrade. Project's been going pretty smooth, and so we're finally starting to build that. So, I'm requesting the motion to approve the pay request, number one, to Reener Pump Systems in the amount of $47,215.05 for the 12th Street Lift Station Upgrades Pre-Purchase Project with authorization for mayor to sign.
Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve pay request, number one, to Reener Pump Systems Incorporated in the amount of $47,215.05 for the 12th Street Lift Station Upgrades Pre-Purchase Project with authorization for the mayor to sign.
All right.
Seconded.
Thank you. Main motion's been made by President Henderson to approve the pay request, number one, to Reener Pump Systems, Inc., in the amount of $47,215.05 for the 12th Street Lift Station Upgrade Pre-Purchase Project, authorization for the mayor to sign. The second was made by Counselor Denham. Is there any further discussion? And that's just the pay request, right? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Any abstentions? No abstentions? No nays? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Finally, Mr. Thompson, come on down. Mr. Thompson is Exhibit A for how the best-laid plans of my son and man sometimes do.
Your words, Mayor, Counsel. I'm here today, I have a whole presentation. I'll keep it short. I understand we are here a little later in the evening. But in short, I would like you to consider me for your position of city attorney, at least for the criminal side. And I submitted a contract over a couple of months ago. At this point, I would just ask that you reconsider that contract, and humbly ask the mayor to nominate me for at least this criminal.
You are nominated at the, actually, what it will be, I think, there's three parts to the motion to make this work, because it's just going to be a year so far, okay? And the reason for that is, you are one hand clapping, and you are a demonstration of how the model that has been here for 34 of the 36 years no longer works very well, when our city attorney stepped down to become, or stepped over, actually stepped up to be the clerk. It is virtually, I'm not saying it's virtually impossible, it is really hard to get a part-time civil attorney. We can't afford a part-time prosecutor and a full-time city attorney. We just don't have the budget.
I disagree with you that the model's failed. I think the model's worked pretty well.
Well, but we can't, we haven't been able to replace it. That's the point. We can't, we need a civil attorney. We can't, it's tough to get a part-time civil attorney.
I can, I can replace the one half that I can. I would, I would love to help you on the civil end. We can't do that.
Yeah, can't do that.
We can't do that. You know, we have conflicts between the city and the county where they both need. I wish I could help you out there. I can't. I'm more than willing to help you out here, though. Numbers-wise, if you really did a search, you're not going to find a criminal attorney anywhere near my rate either.
Well, that's right.
So, I would just ask that you, you sign the contract I sent over, and if you're in a position for the next budget cycle where you want to make a change, we can have that discussion again. I'm more than willing and happy to have that discussion with you, but I think the contract that I sent over's fair. It's more than fair and a great benefit to the city.
Well, that's a future discussion. Right now, it's for the next fiscal year, if that's okay with you. Because that's all we've got in the budget.
So, my understanding is that you're nominating me to be the city attorney, but you're limiting...
No, 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 no. The city prosecutor for the next fiscal year.
I'm actually unsure how that you can limit the nomination.
That's, it's just a nomination for a year. It's an appointment for a year.
I, nowhere, when I looked through the code, did I see that it was for a one-year term.
But we can make it a one-year term.
We can make it a one-year term. I'm not interested in a one-year term. I don't think that's best for the city. I don't think that's best for my office. I'm happy to provide, the contract that I sent over does give you the power at any, at any point to replace me. You still have that 90-day window, and that's in there, and you all have that understanding. But I don't think it's best for the city or my office to just do this for a one-year term. You still have the ability to remove me at any point, you know, 30 days from now, 60 days from now, 270 days from now before that one-year term. But I think that the, that having that continuity in there, in case we're in a bind again next fiscal year, it's going to continue to go unless the council as a whole makes a determination that's not what you want.
So, Mayor, my, to my understanding, so we're still doing the increase, right? The yearly increase that you talked about, right?
That's what I proposed for the contract, yes.
But there was a rumor that we talked, well, I wouldn't say rumor, it was actually said, that you were willing to waive one year, waive the one year.
If you'd like to do that this year, absolutely. I understand you're in a bind. We can do that.
Okay.
So, then I would, I would present the contract the same, and I'd re-present it to you, and just shift those numbers down a single year, and maybe give you a little more wiggle room to find some civil help.
Mayor?
Yeah.
So, I apologize again, since I missed that first meeting, but when the other presentation was provided to us, I worked when they had a city prosecutor and county prosecutor. I don't believe that's in the best interest of the city, and I voice that too, because there's always that discommunication like that stuff, too. We thought we had this resolved in the department. That has not come forward. I know what the prosecutor at the office does for us. I think you have to do outstanding job for us, so I'm in full support of that, to move forward with that procedure. Is there any, any time in the future you could handle our civil side, too, or is it just too much of conflict between city and county?
That'd be a conflict with the city and county. We just, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. The state bar would, would have some issues with us.
Makes sense.
Sorry.
Well, we don't have a contract to approve tonight.
Okay.
So, I nominate you to be the city prosecutor at the rate for the next year of $50,000. $50,000.
I appreciate it, Mayor. I'm not interested in $50,000. My proposal was for $48,250, and as I just represented, Mr. Butler, I can go back down to the year, the year below, $43,000, I believe is $500.
So, you're saying 43.5?
I think that was mine. Yep, 43.5 is what I've been operating on for the last 15 years, and continue, will continue to do it for another year, and hope that we can work together and get the fave.
So, you send over a new agreement?
Happily, yes.
Okay. So, tonight, it's just nomination. We're just talking about the new fiscal year for $43,500. Mr. Thompson is my nominee. Contract to follow.
I'll send it over.
Chair Leonard Tanenmotion, on appointment.
Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion, we approve and hire, I guess, Eric Thompson with Jim County Prosecutor's Office to do the criminal prosecution for the City of Emmett in the amount of $43,500 for the next fiscal year with a contract to follow.
Second. Okay. Main motion has been made by Counselor Nebiker to appoint Eric Thompson as the city prosecutor for the next year, contract to follow, in the amount of $43,500. Counselor Butler seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion passes.
Thank you. I'll be happy to work with you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
All right. Bill Dean.
Brian. Sullivan.
You have my report. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Treasurer?
Okay, you have the monthly financial, financial report ending July. We should be right at 83% on our categories. We did get our tax collections in from the June collection, so the revenues on those tax appropriations look a little high right now, but it'll level out in the next couple of months. So, we're looking good. Everything looks fine. Is there any questions on my report?
Mayor?
Yes.
I see, under the major accomplishments, it says you received two bids for office construction. Is that for the doors?
That's actually, we're looking at doing something different. I'm looking at putting in a small cubicle office-type thing with doors. That is something different than our doors that we're talking about, that Mike is working on. I've just put it out for bids right now, just to test the waters, to see if we could do it or not. So, that's all I'm doing at this point.
Just for a little more privacy in this area.
So, I, so I have someplace lockable?
Sure.
For things.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Fire.
Mayor, Counsel, you have a copy of my report. Are there any questions?
Mayor?
Yes.
We should be set a beat on your deployment. Are they back now, or are you still out?
Nope. They're, today, they were working as a hang crew in some hotspots, and they're happy to do so. They were deploying hoses and putting out some hotspots interior, and the fire's pretty much out. They will be demobilizing on Thursday, doing the weed wash and all that type of thing that they need to do, and then they'll be coming back either Thursday night or Friday first thing. But they're down on the, they're down in the Oahu Mountains. They had like a little breakout of a fire. Well, the fire was pretty much contained, and then they had an incident, or else they probably would've been home three or four days ago. But they're doing a really great job.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Elaborate.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. You have my report to review. Any questions for me?
Mayor?
Yes.
Just curious how the paint is coming on. Is it pretty well done, or is it looking good?
Yes, yes. Actually, I'm going to be reaching out to point out just a couple of spots that I think need a little bit more attention, but I think overall, it is finished, and I think it turned out really well. How about you guys?
I like the color.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Yes.
Did you get the parking strip stops?
We have, we do have all the supplies, and the Public Works Director is getting that scheduled for us, so, yeah, it'll be nice to have that done as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Police.
Counsel, Mayor, you have my report. I'd like to point out the dispatch calls, 602.
Oh, no.
I have not had a chance to really confirm it, but I don't think we've ever been that high before. We do have, as you see, the code enforcement calls, so 48 for code enforcement and 25 for patrol, so there's 73 calls. That inflates that a little bit. You know, we haven't had code enforcement for a few years, so that's definitely one reason, but that still gets us around to 500. In the last six months, I think we were at 250 calls. I remember seeing that for a month. I remember 300 and some being pretty consistent, but 600, we've been real busy, so.
Wow.
Yeah.
Mayor?
Yes.
Chief, on the ordinance, is that, I know there's a lot there, is that complaint-driven usually, or is that just observations and resolve, or?
Most of that is being observed by the code enforcement officer. She goes out and locates the majority of those. I think a percentage was around 88 at one point. 88% of that was just driven by her. But the email has been becoming very productive. A lot of people have been contacting her by email, and not just the initial contact, but the communication back and forth has been very well, very good. So, that's increasing.
Beated, but it actually looked really well, so I'll tell her, good job.
All right. Well, good. She's here, you can tell her.
I know. With the chief, they'll, good, good job.
You should bring her up or introduce her.
Has she never been introduced to the council?
No.
Oh, my goodness. I think this is the opportunity for her to come.
I didn't wear my uniform.
Oh. Well, you can stand up where you're at. This is our code enforcement officer.
You're dressed.
Renee Ramsey.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your hard work.
All right. Thanks, Counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Fremar.
I do have one thing. Like, a week ago, we received a check from Apex Land Development of $50,000 for the new park that we're putting out, and they're kind of adjacent to their development, and they asked if we would build a pickleball court out there for their development in our city park. So, I'll probably be coming to you guys here in the next meeting or two and getting that finalized, but you guys have my reports. Any questions, comments?
Yes.
You have repair Army Corps levy concerns? What were their concerns?
So, their concerns, a lot is the vegetation that has been growing up on the levees. Our levees are, you know, right there on Washington Bridge, and kind of wraps around and out by the wastewater treatment plant. And so, we've got most of it sprayed. We're just kind of waiting for it to die off, and then we're going to go in there and get it all pulled out, any of the little trees and stuff like that, get those pulled out.
That's kind of an annual event, isn't it?
Yeah, we do it annually, and they, I can't remember exactly how often they come, Army Corps comes and does their inspections, and so, and we go through and fix them.
It seems kind of counterproductive to me, take the vegetation out, because you'd think that that would hold the levy in place.
That's, you know, that's kind of when I told them when they walked through, because I, this is the first time I walked through it with them. I'm like, really, you want me to pull the vegetation off of that? But apparently, that's their standards, so.
It just seems...
It does, yeah.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just a couple of questions. I did have questions about the Dagger Falls Park. Have you started work on that?
Yes, we've actually been, we've been moving dirt in and grading it out, and then I'll be kind of, you know, getting ready for this pickleball court to add that, probably try and get started on sprinklers mid-September, and try and hopefully plant grass before it gets too cold, and then the spring, they'll have a park there.
So, is the majority of that park going to be just grass? Are you going to put playground equipment, or do you have plans for that?
Eventually, when we have the money, money for it, I would just like to put the playground equipment. I'd like to put a couple of trees in there, and I know a lot of people have been asking for, you know, like basketball court or something like that there, and there'll be a little parking area there for people to come in and park, so they're not actually clogging up the subdivision, so.
And just one more question. And just one more question. I think it might have been a couple months ago, I asked about the site triangle at Seventh and Johns. Did you ever get a chance to look at that? And the reason I asked that, because today I was coming off of Johns on the Seventh Street, and one of our marked patrol units actually had to pull out, pass the crosswalk, almost out into the intersection to see the coming, traffic coming from the, coming from the south heading north on there. So it's unfortunate that our officer had to actually do that, too, but the person has a fence at an angle, and I don't believe that's such, but it's a tall one, I don't know, Brian, maybe somebody could tell me, is it about three feet in the site triangle?
Four feet.
Four feet.
It's a large brush there, and I thought you were going to look at that one, and the
one at Seventh and Hawthorne.
Yes, I don't remember going to the one on Seventh and Johns, but I will get on it. Yeah, I'll go, I'll go look at it.
Unfortunately, as I said, the officer's out there, so any best, but if they're stopped for crossing the crosswalk, that might be, look at that.
Yeah, and I'll go in and look at it, and then we can get our code enforcer on it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Him bringing that up, at the end of North Pine, well, I guess, is it North Pine, where it goes from the south to Locust? Right there, if you're going that direction and you're in a short car, you cannot see east.
Okay, on Locust and Pine?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would say that, I'm just guessing, probably 30% of our intersections have a site issue at some point.
That one's really bad.
Right.
My concern with Seventh and Hawthorne, the seniors is right there, and I, that's...
Yes.
That's my biggest concern for that one.
Mine was the fact that if you have people that are driving to the hospital...
Right, yeah.
And, you know, if you're going to have an accident out front.
Right.
Mayor?
It'd be convenient.
What, yeah.
Yes.
I have a question. I just, I am just curious, because to me, it would seem like we should be calling dispatch if we have a concern, maybe, as opposed to here. I don't, and maybe I'm wrong, it just, I feel like maybe reporting it in the proper, I just don't know. I am curious.
I don't even, us...
Here comes someone that can answer.
Thank you.
So right now, any code enforcement, when called dispatch, the people actually get her email account that I'm talking to you about, and they're advised that they can email her. So that is how it's handled now. So that is how this should be.
That's even how we at the Public Works go, go through it, is we actually email her.
I didn't think about it until...
You called dispatch first?
No. We email directly. Email directly to the code enforcer.
And we can email directly, too, right, Chief?
Correct. Yep.
Thank you, I just was curious, because I, I do have, I do have questions, and I just wanted to know what the right avenue was, so, thank you.
I was just following suit.
No, I know. I was just curious.
If everybody remembers, the meeting where I brought that up, I was asking who to direct that to. At that time, Mr. Fremar stood forward and said, "I will take care of that," so I wasn't certainly getting any dispatch, because if only dispatch is saying, "Hey, we have a site triangle problem, they may not understand what we're talking about." I think a speeder, you know, somebody doing something more criminal, I think this is just something that maybe ordinance or Public Works said they could take care of it, too, so that's why that came in.
Yeah, and I think when you, when you did ask that, I wasn't quite sure with the process with the code enforcer, because she was new at the time, and so now that we kind of got our process down.
All right. And it might not be violation, it just, I know it's really hard to see it going that direction, so.
Right. Any other questions?
Mayor, Council, next meeting, we anticipate having the proposal for Phase Two of our access control upgrades and so forth. We should have those numbers finalized and should be on the agenda, looking to get funding